It's now 7:00 PM, and so we'll start the city council meeting on the in the new year. And we'll also authorize all the different agencies call to order. So in our tradition, we'll begin the meeting with an invocation, the pledge allegiance, and the city clerk will announce those two individuals.
Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Joe McTarsney of Calgary Montclair, and the pledge will be led by Councilmember Johnson.
Okay, everybody, please stand. And whenever you're ready. You're maybe on mute.
I need to try and find him in the list.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, please join me in prayer. Our Father, we thank you that you are faithful to hear and receive our prayers. I pray you, Father, that you would protect our leadership of our city, Lord. I thank you for them, Lord, how they are wisely navigating us through this uncharted territory that we have never been in before. Continue, Lord, to grant them calmness, courage, wisdom, and rest. I pray you protect each and every single one of them and their family members. And Lord, as a health crisis continues, we ask you would be your protector and our guide. And we ultimately pray that you would remove this virus. And Father, we pray that our country would be united and have peace. And please protect our country, our state, and our city of Montclair tomorrow during the presidential inauguration. We pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
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 Please join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please take roll call?
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
I'm here.
Mayor Protem Ru.
Present.
Mayor Dutre.
Present. We decide to have two presentations to to conduct. The first presentation will be the Military Banner Program as presented by the Community Activities Commission. And I'm going to ask our vice chairperson of that commission, Richard Scalante, to tell us about honorees. Richard, it's all yours.
Yeah, 13 years ago, the Community Activities Commissions began sponsoring a military street banner program to recognize the Montclair residents who served in the armed forces. In 2020, a total of 53 military banners and two banners honoring all veterans were proudly displayed throughout the city of Montclair. Tonight, we would like to honor five individuals whose banners were displayed during the service and who have recently been discharged. First, we would like to recognize John Paul Polito, who served in the Army from August 8th of 1989 to October 1st of 2020, and will completely retire on February 1st of 2021. After serving in the Army for 31 years and two months, Mr. Polito held the rank of Sergeant Major, Command Sergeant Major, that's CSM E9. He was stationed in Fort Hood, Texas four times, Fort Carson, Colorado two times, Fort Irwin, California two times, Fort Knox in Kentucky, Fort Bliss, Bliss, Texas, and two times in Korea. Mr. Polito was also deployed in Operations Desert Shield and Desert Storm from 1990 to 1991. Operations Iraq Freedom, 2008 to 2009. Operations Resolute Support Afghanistan, 2017, and Operations Atlantic Resolve resolved Poland, Hungary, Germany, and Lithuania from 2018 to 2019. His military and service education include many courses such as Primary Leadership Development, Basic Non-Commission Officer, Advanced Non-Commission Officer, Army Drill Sergeant, and First Sergeant, among others. Some of Mr. Polito's awards and decorations include the Legion of Merit Bronze Star Medal, Maturist Service Medal, Army Accommodation Medal, Army Achievement Medal, Valorous Unit Award, and Merit Torres Unit Accommodation. Mr. Polito attended Al Camino Elementary School in Ontario, Vernon Middle School in Montclair, and graduated from Montclair High School in 1989. He was a resident of Montclair from the age of seven years old and left for the Army when he was 17 years old. Mr. Polito's parents have been living in the same home in Montclair since he was seven years old. Since his honorable discharge, Mr. Polito enrolled in Excelsior University and has projected graduating date of December 2021 with the Bachelor of Science in Liberal Arts. Once he completes his bachelor's degree, he will begin working on his teacher's certification requirements and plans to become a junior ROTC instructor at the high school in Central Texas. Mr. Polito's military banner was displayed on Central Avenue. On behalf of the city of Montclair, we would like to thank John Paul Polito for his service to our country. Next, we would like to honor Salvador G. Vaya, who served in the Army from August 18th to 2015, August 18th, 2015, to January 25th, 2019, and held the rank of Specialist. During his service, Mr. Vaya was stationed in Fort Rainwright, Alaska, Kunduz Province, Afghanistan, and Mr. Vaya received the following awards and medals: Army Accommodations, Army Good Conduct, Afghanistan Campaign, NATO Overseas Service Ribbon, and Global War on Terrorism Service Medal. Mr. Vaya has attended Howard Elementary School, Surrano Middle School, and graduated from Montclair High School in 2014. He has been a resident of Montclair since 2004. Since he's been honorable discharged, Mr. Vaya has been working full-time and is working towards receiving a bachelor's degree in business administration. Mr. Vaya's military banner was displayed on Hope Boulevard. On behalf of the city of Montclair, we would like to thank Salvador G. Vaya for his service to our country. Next, we would like to honor Jorge Magaña, who served in the Army from August 22nd, 2000 to August 31st of 2020. He held the rank of Special Forces. During his time in service, Mr. Magaña was stationed in Fort Bragg, North Carolina, Germany, and Eglin Air Force Base, Florida. He served 15 years in Army Special Forces and 42 months in combat and has earned the Bronze Stars and various other awards. Since his honorable discharge, he has moved from Florida to Colorado and has obtained a job with the United States Immigration Customs Enforcement, also known as ICE, where he is currently training. He has a Montclair, he was a Montclair resident for 12 years and graduated from Montclair High School in the year 2000. Having worked as a security for Vice President Pence for more than six months, his career goals include working for the Federal Bureau of Investigation and providing overseas defense. Mr. Magaña's military banner was displayed on Hope Boulevard. On behalf of the city of Montclair, we would like to thank Jorge Magaña for his service to our country. Next, we would like to honor Christian Luis Cordinas, who served in the Marines from 2014 to 2018 and held the rank of Sergeant. During his service, Mr. Cordinas was stationed in Jacksonville, North Carolina, and was deployed two times during his service. He entered the Marines in the age of 17 without hesitation because he wanted to serve his country to the best of his ability. During his service, Mr. Cordinas attended multiple classes, received multiple awards and completions of classes for excelling in his field as a heavy-duty mechanic. He continues to be a resident of Montclair. Since he was on a very discharge in 2018, his career goals are to become a welding inspector. His banner displays on Benito Street. On behalf of the city of Montclair, we would like to thank Christian Luis Cordinas for his service to our country. Next, we would like to honor Casera Al Sanchez, who served in the Army from September 2013 to October of 2019 and held the rank of Army E4. During her services, Ms. Sanchez was stationed in Fort Carson, Colorado, and Schofield Barracks in Hawaii. During her service, she received the Army Accommodation Medal for training exercise in South Korea. Ms. Sanchez's career and schooling goals include occupational safety and environmental technology. Since her honorary discharge, Ms. Sanchez has been working and attending school. She graduated from Montclair High School in 2006 and has a resident and was a resident of Montclair for 15 years. Ms. Sanchez's military banner was displayed on Mona Vista Avenue. On behalf of the city of Montclair, we would like to thank Casera Al Sanchez for her service to our country. On behalf of the city of Montclair, we would like to thank each and every one of you for your services to our country. Mayor Dutre, that concludes our presentation.
Well, thank you, Vice Chair Scalante, for the presentation. And thank you for all of our veterans and for your service to our country. And obviously, in Montclair, we are very honored to have you as residents to represent our great country. But we will schedule a time to present your banner to you or your family representative. And staff will contact you in the near future to make these arrangements. On behalf of City of Montclair, again, I just want to say thank you if those soldiers or now former soldiers are on the Zoom call or their family members are on Zoom call. What we're gonna do is, I'm sorry, we're gonna, what we are going to do is we're gonna stand for them and we're gonna clap for them, so please join me. Thank you. We have a second presentation this evening, and this is a presentation I came up with, and I think it's a good time to do this. If you're aware or not aware, our president-elect Biden this afternoon or this evening in Washington, DC, he had a memorial to honor the 400,000 residents who died from COVID-19. And so I approached staff last December that we should start recognizing Montclair residents or Montclair volunteers, Montclair businesses, or others who have been making a contribution to our residents and to our community as a result of COVID-19. So I'm gonna ask that this first honoree be presented by our Community Services Director, Marcia Richter. Marcia, you there?
I'm here, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Mayor, City Councilmembers, it's my pleasure to let you know why Mr. Gregory Pointe is so deserving of this award. In April 2020, Gregory, a Rancho Cucamonga resident, contacted our Meals on Wheels program to offer his assistance in delivering meals to senior citizens in Montclair. He's an actor, and due to COVID-19, many television productions were stopped. Many of the Meals on Wheels volunteers were also over age 65 and were not able to continue doing their volunteer work with the governor's stay-at-home order due to COVID. Gregory's call to offer his assistance came at a perfect time when the Meals on Wheels program was struggling to continue getting the meals out to their clients here in Montclair. The program has been able to continue thanks to volunteers like Gregory offering to help during this pandemic. We believe Gregory should be recognized because when he called to volunteer, he agreed to helping one day a week. And by the next day, he had already committed to helping two days a week. Recently, one of the other volunteers unfortunately became ill, and Gregory stepped up to also cover their day of the program. So he was delivering meals to our Montclair residents on the Meals on Wheels program three days a week. He is the first one to offer help if one of the volunteers has an emergency or for some reason can't make their assigned day. Gregory has been an outstanding volunteer during this pandemic, and we want to recognize him and thank him for his dedication and service to the Montclair community. Thank you so much, Gregory Pointe.
Gregory Pointe, I appreciate your volunteerism and really help the seniors of Montclair. Obviously, they're greatly impacted by this coronavirus. And so it takes special people like you to ensure that our seniors in Montclair are well taken care of. So we do have a certificate for you, and we're gonna try to plan a date next week based on your schedule and my schedule to ensure you get this certificate for this great work you're doing. So on behalf of City of Montclair, Gregory, we thank you, and I do believe you are on the line. I know that, and I understand you do, you would like to make some comments. If you'd like to, please unmute.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, great. So like Marcia said, thank you for that, Marcia. That was brilliant. I couldn't have said it better about myself, but I, it is my, it is my honor. I believe in God with all my heart, and I just feel if I have the ability to do something, why not do it? And I couldn't think, I saw you guys do, right at the beginning of the pandemic, I was trying to volunteer in different venues in different cities. I'm a Rancho Cucamonga resident. So when I, when you guys popped up, I really can't remember how you guys popped up, but I jumped on it. And I think I talked to Marcia, and she said there is an opening, and the rest is history. And to be honest with you, I, if the position is there, I will never leave it. As long as God keeps me healthy, I've made so many friends and befriended a lot of the recipients of the meals. And there is no better payday than to see the smile on their face and go up, even if they don't open the door, to know that I'm feeding these people. The gratification is beyond description. There is no higher pay, so it is my honor. I'm flattered, and I just won't stop. I'm a workaholic, and there's no better honor. I thank you. I love your city.
Well, thank you very much, and we will, again, make sure you get this certificate for your heart commitment to the city of Montclair.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
You too. Thank you, sir.
Okay, we will now move on to public comments of the agenda. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak. They have five minutes. I appreciate the staff of putting in the slide. So if you're on Zoom, you'll raise your hand if you wish to speak. If you're on the phone, you'll dial 9 to raise your hand, and then you'll dial 6 to unmute yourself. All you traditionally will start with the city clerk, and ask the city clerk if she's receiving any written comments or other members of the public wish to speak. City clerk?
Yes, I received two written comments that I can read aloud.
Okay.
Okay. The first one is Verna Ruiz. My name is Verna Ruiz, and I am a resident of the city of Montclair. I'm emailing today to request that parks within the city be reopened. I have an elementary-aged daughter who needs physical exercise like all children. We are fortunate enough to have a backyard where we spend our days. However, many people do not. The city parks are where people can go to spend some time in the fresh air, connect with nature, relax under trees, play, or exercise. With the city parks closed, Montclair residents are unable to do those things. Please consider opening the city parks. My family would greatly benefit from having them open. And that's the end of the first comment, and then I have one more from Alma Trejo. I have been a resident of Montclair for the past 22 years. I have lived in the city since I was 11 years old. This is the city that saw me grow into the adult I am today, an adult that is passionate about social justice and dedicated to ensuring my community lives without fear of persecution because of the color of their skin, their identity, their sexual orientation, their legal status, etc. I continue to work in a field that allows me to fight for the rights of workers statewide, so I'm no stranger to conflict, problematic politics, and holding elected officials accountable. You may be aware of problematic history of our newly-elected City Councilmember Benjamin Lopez. Unfortunately, many of us didn't find out that Mr. Lopez had actively lobbied for discriminatory policies and legislation against the LGBTQ+ community until one or two weeks before the election. Since then, I have utilized social media platforms to reach out to Mr. Lopez regarding this issue and asking hard questions, questions that have been unanswered, ignored, and often blocked. Mr. Lopez has actively been blocking everyone who asks these hard questions. If Mr. Lopez is no longer supporting homophobic legislation and rhetoric, it should be no issue for him to speak publicly about it and engage with his constituents instead of blocking us. If you have changed and you are committed to transformative change, show us how you have worked to undo the damage you have done. And that is the end of that comment.
Okay, so those are the two written comments that you received. And at this time, I don't see any members of the public that have raised their hands. See, now I have one person, just like Bruce Cope, and I don't see anybody else other than Bruce Cope. So Mr. Cope, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. Just wanted to say I'm excited. After four years, tomorrow at noon, we'll finally be able to see, be able to make America great again. I'm so happy for that, that the reign of terror of the last four years of the criminal that we've had in the executive office is finally gonna be over. He tried to overthrow our government on January 6th and was unsuccessful. He tried to lie his way into another four years, and he was unsuccessful. Hopefully soon, we'll be able to prosecute this man and put him away for good and all the people that tried to assist him in overthrowing our US, beautiful US government. Today, I saw a beautiful memorial to the 400,000 people who have lost their lives, many needlessly as a result of this criminal. It was the first memorial that was even put in place by our government, which was sad. But I'm so glad the newly-installed and freely-elected president that's coming on board tomorrow put that gesture as the forefront of his election. That's gonna be such a great change in our, in our forward-looking outlook for our government. We are in the middle of a pandemic. We have people who aren't wearing masks. It's gonna be good to see a president who's responsible and thoughtful and empathetic to the people who are suffering under this and will be able to mandate 100 days of mask-wearing. I'm so proud of our city government, city of Montclair, staff, elected officials, who continue to uphold this mandate, even though our county is actively pursuing and putting people at risk by their, by their actions of trying to sue the state and trying to sue the governor to relax the rules. I understand people are suffering from, and small businesses are suffering, but the most important thing we need to do now is save lives. And our elected representatives at the county level, Kurt Hagman in particular, Kurt Hagman in particular, is really doing a disservice to his county and his, the citizens in his county. And I really am disappointed at our county-level elected officials for putting people at risk, possibly criminally doing that. And I just ask that people continue to wear masks over the next year. Socially distance, wash your hands. These are the things that would have prevented thousands upon thousands of deaths. And I ask that the city of Montclair continue working to save the lives of its residents, and I appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no other public comment, and we will now move down to the consent calendar portion of the agenda. And I want to ask my colleagues, if they have any items they wish to pull off the agenda. So do I hear any items you want to pull off the agenda? Is there somebody there?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Lopez.
I would like to pull A2, C1 for a brief comment, and D3.
Okay, C, A2 is... You have a correction, item A2?
I do.
What's the correction?
On page seven of 12 of those particular minutes, the right, two paragraphs above number three where it starts off, "moved by Mayor Dutre, seconded by Councilmember Johnson." This is relating to the extension of the street sweeping issue. If I recall correctly, the second I thought came from Ms. Martinez or myself, and I'm making that assumption because Councilmember Johnson voted against the motion. Am I correct?
Mr. Lopez, you are correct.
So the second needs to come, and I don't recall if it was myself or Councilmember Martinez, but that second needs to be corrected because it's incorrect as currently printed.
Okay, so what we do is we'll pull this, we'll defer this to the next meeting, the minutes, while staff correct that.
I do think I listened to the minutes to confirm that because I think, I thought that that Councilmember Johnson had just motioned to bring it for a vote, but I can go back and check on it because I did have it in my notes, and I had to go back and listen for that one.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll defer this item. We'll take this item off the agenda. Item A2 be removed from the agenda. All right, go on to your next item, which is C1.
C1, just a brief comment. I note there have been comments made by the public on social media regarding rental assistance for residents that may be struggling given the pandemic and lack of work. I'd like to say that this particular item on the consent calendar, and I'll read, read from a phrase from it. It says, "The city's successful application for HHAP funding will be utilized to provide a comprehensive outreach program with the goal of providing rental assistance or rapid rehousing, and will be implemented collaboratively by the Human Services Department and the Code Enforcement Division. Subsequently, the amount of $115,000 will be put toward eligible expenses from January 26th to June 30th of 2025." I just wanted the public to be aware that the city is doing all it can with respect to that issue to put some of those folks in at least digitally on social media at ease.
Well, thank you, and I'll just add that I know that our staff, more particularly the Code Enforcement Division, has really worked hard to these programs. They do, they have partnered with, I think, at least one or two motels here in Montclair to house individuals as part of transitional housing. And you know, I just want to state that this transition problem is growing on two fronts. It's growing, obviously, in economic front as people are losing their jobs or losing income and not able to pay the rent or mortgage. And then the second front is that we continue to have an increase of individuals with mental situations, drug situations, being released out of prison, and they're living on the streets that need to be dealt with. So this is an area that I would like to spend more time in 2021 to tackle, hopefully through our, through a budget process. We will now move on to your next, your last item, Mr. Lopez, it's item D3.
I, upon getting my agenda and looking over this report, I have vacillated between my position on this. I I have had a couple brief conversations with our city manager, who's been helpful in explaining a few of the key components that I had raised. I just want, again, some assurances. And for the public to know first that this would, the proposal here with respect to this item concerns sick leave pay for individual staff rather that contract or come down with COVID-19 and their ability to use sick pay and if they exhaust it, and the ramifications for what happens. and their ability to use sick pay and if they exhaust it and the ramifications for what happens in those events. I, first point is, if I understand the language of this, if a, here, here's where I have a problem. If a, if an employee contracts, but through no mistake of their own, COVID-19 twice, and they exhaust in the first instance their 80 hours of of paid leave, can we please give assurances that they will not be denied any sick leave pay or the ability to use it in the second instance? And in addition to that, the provision that states an employee that may be in deficit of such timed accrued can have that counted on their record in, in fact, in deficit. I, the city manager did explain to me that the presumption based on the prior law is that the city governments are responsible or they're held accountable for the contract, for employees that contracted disease. I disagree with that statement, as does the city manager, but that is what the presumption is that they're giving the cities. At the same time, conversely, I feel it is no fault of the employees either. Granted, if they don't go travel abroad, if they don't jump in crowds of 100 or more, I just have a dilemma here with this proposal. I see the good, I see the bad. I just, I don't think, I wouldn't want an employee to be denied in the future if hospital visits, let's say we have a very severe case where a staff member is in the hospital beyond two, three weeks and they're there four to six weeks, that could happen. Or if they contracted a second time, I don't want them to be in a bind. And I, I'll leave it at that at the moment.
I'm going to ask the city manager to comment and maybe he can address some of your questions or, are you there, Ed?
Yes, yes, I am. I think that the general rule is that if we've determined that an employee through no fault of their own contracts COVID-19, they've complied with federal, state, and local guidance, we would more than likely cover each employee in every instance. The changes here are designed to address the elimination of the FFRCA, which expired December 31st. There is a good chance that under President-elect Biden's administration, the provisions of FFRCA, which grant the 80 hours of COVID sick leave to employees will be reinstated. And the changes that the resolution proposed will probably be moot at that point, but right now we are in a state of limbo and the previous provisions or the provisions of the resolution that currently are in place would require an employee to use his or her own sick leave at this point in time. By making this change to the resolution, we would be effectively adopting the 80 hours of COVID sick leave under the FFRCA, which again is now expired, so this would ensure a continuum of that practice as far as the city being aligned with what the federal government had otherwise been stipulating under the FFRCA. So, we think that this is a positive change as it relates to employees. I think the only issue that may be addressed or may be of some concern is that if an employee through their own failure contracts COVID-19, so for example, knowing that a guidance prohibits them from going to large gatherings, but they insist on going to a large gathering and they contract COVID-19, then the city may say that, well, the employee failed to follow the proper guidance and therefore he or she would have to use their own sick leave in that, in that case. However, if the federal government does reauthorize the provisions of FFRCA, that even that flexibility issue under the resolution would no longer be void and the city would have to continue to provide 80 hours of COVID-19-related sick leave in all instances when an employee contracts COVID-19. So, I don't think that there's any real danger in making these changes as it relates to an employee and in fact, even adopting these, these guidelines with or without the federal government reauthorizing the FFRCA. I think that the city is still stepping forward and providing the necessary protections to employees in almost all instances, except perhaps again where an employee intentionally elects on their own to violate the specific guidances adopted by the federal government, the state government, and the City of Montclair.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item here from the council? If not, Mr. Lopez, are you satisfied with that or we need to have a separate vote on this item?
I'm satisfied with the explanation.
Okay, if you don't mind, Kyle, would you like to make the motion then for the consent counter? With exception of item, the minutes, which is item A2?
Yes, I move that the consent calendar be adopted as presented with the exception of item A2.
I'll second.
I will second that. Bill Ruh.
I believe, sorry, Bill, I think Councilmember Johnson's second or first.
Okay.
So, we will take the roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Rue?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Councilmember, I missed one. I'm sorry, I have to go back. Councilmember Martinez? Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Rue?
Aye.
And Mayor Dutrey?
Aye, so that motion is adopted 5-0. The next item on the agenda is business item to consider adoption of resolution number 21-3298. Staff, a staff report or presentation? Is Ed, you there?
I am. I'm sorry, I was distracted for a moment. Which one are we on?
Oh, this is the, the allowing retired Deputy Fire Chief Jackson to be retired.
Yes, as you know, Mr. Jackson retired at the end of last month. And the city has engaged in a recruitment to replace his position. This is an outside recruitment. So, outside individuals as well as in-house employees can apply for the position and go through the selection process. We anticipate that identifying an appropriate candidate to replace Mr. Jackson as our Deputy Fire Chief will take approximately three to four months. Therefore, we feel it's appropriate to continue his employment under the CalPERS Authorized 960 program by the council adopting a resolution before you this evening. This would allow for Mr. Jackson to come back under, under a temporary basis, working 40 hours a week for no more than six months, provided that the hours that he works do not exceed 960. During this time, we will continue the recruitment efforts to identify a potential successor to Mr. Jackson. Obviously, being in the position for six years, we feel that he has the experience as well as the commitment to continue in the position for the next six months or again until whatever time it takes for us to complete the recruitment and identify a successor for Mr. Jackson, again, whether that's in-house or out-house or outside the organization. In the interim, until the council takes action, Battalion Chief Dave Pol is acting as, acting Deputy Fire Chief for the Montclair Fire Department until we can get the authorization from the council related to this resolution. And, and once Mr. Jackson is on board, then Mr. Pol will resume his normal battalion chief duties. The funds related to bringing Mr. Jackson back on board are contained in the city's budget. We had anticipated, obviously, that Mr. Jackson would be employed for the full year. So, with his retirement, the remaining six months of funds in his, in the object code for his position are available to pay for him. We do have to keep him at his past authorized city council approved salary. So, he will be coming back on board at each step of the salary range. There will be a savings related to benefit costs because as a annuitant, we are not responsible for his benefit-related costs. Just the salary component should he come back under a 960 program. So, staff does ask the city council to consider adoption of this resolution so that we can bring Mr. Jackson back on board as a temporary acting Deputy Fire Chief until we complete a recruitment and identify the appropriate candidate to replace him. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. I believe we have a question from Council, Mayor Protem Rue, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, it's not so much a question. I was planning to make a motion for the item as presented.
Oh, it still be, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion for the item as presented this evening.
Is there a second motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Lopez, second the motion?
Yes, I will second, but, yes.
Sorry, Councilman Lopez, did you have a motion, second the motion, or you had, did you have a comment?
Both. I will second and I'd like to comment, please.
Go ahead.
First of all, I've, I've known Mr. Jackson for quite some time. I think the practice of bringing him back until a Deputy Fire Chief is selected is a prudent idea. And I am in favor of it. I would like to say, just speaking on my behalf and what my position is, I would encourage those that are in the interview process and making recommendations to this council on filling that position that we strongly try to recruit from within and utilize the talent and the level of commitment we have from the current rank and file that are qualified for the position. And in addition to that, hopefully some way down the road in the future, restoring a fire chief position comparable to our police chief like we used to have years ago. But that being said, I, I am in favor of the motion and I'm glad to see Steve coming back even for an interim period.
Well, thank you. As we know, the recruit will be both inside and outside, and again, we, we encourage our inside candidates to apply. If there are no other comments, Dan, we will go ahead and ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Rue?
Aye.
Mayor Dutrey?
Aye, so that motion is also adopted 5-0. We will now go down to communications and I'll start with the city attorney. I think the city attorney, you're muted right now.
Thank you. I was trying to unmute. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I should have mentioned in the earlier presentation that if anyone has a, any legal questions or concerns that, please reach out to me and contact me. And if it's about something coming up on an upcoming agenda, do that before the meeting. So, that's number one. Number two, I have a request that you meet in closed session regarding pending litigation involving Torres versus Montclair. Other than those two items, I have nothing else this evening.
Thank you. City manager?
Yeah, I'll try to give you a quick COVID-19 update. As of today, the United States is reporting nearly 25,000 confirmed COVID-19, I'm sorry, 25 million confirmed COVID-19 cases and 405,000 deaths. A number expected to exceed 500,000 by the end of February 2021. That number would be equal to the 500,000 reported US deaths from the 1918 flu pandemic. That lasted over 2.5 years as opposed to the 12 months for the current coronavirus pandemic. When modern medical science is taken into consideration, it's quite clear that the health risks from the coronavirus are far greater than those associated with the flu, despite assertions that the virus is no worse than the flu. California is reporting approximately 3.1 million confirmed cases and 34,000 deaths. San Bernardino County is reporting 256,109 cases and 1,560 deaths. Montclair is reporting 5,346 cases and 55 deaths. Yesterday, the state epidemiologist, Dr. Erica Pan, recommended providers stop administering doses from a specific batch of the Moderna vaccine following a higher-than-usual number of possibly severe allergic reactions at a mass vaccination site in San Diego. Although fewer than 10 people appeared to experience symptoms related to receiving that vaccine, Pan issued the recommendation out of an extreme abundance of caution. More than 330,000 doses from the batch have been distributed to over 287 providers throughout the state, and that represents approximately 10% of all doses in California's possession. The situation potentially applies to approximately 16,100 total doses received in San Bernardino County, which represents approximately 20% of all of the doses received by the county public health department. And that's expected to limit the county's ability to move forward with plans to expand inoculations. You will recall that last week, the county announced that it will open up inoculations to all people 65 years of age or over. However, it appears that that is now going to be restricted. Cancellations will occur due to the inability to use the Moderna vaccine from the lot number that I had already indicated and the apparent nonexistence of a national stockpile of vaccines that were reportedly due for shipment that were being promised by the current federal administration. However, that stockpile apparently does not exist and never did exist. There's growing concern that the pulled lot of Moderna vaccines could raise already existing fears and hesitancy towards vaccines. As you know, through press reports, a number of American citizens are reluctant to take the vaccine and therefore there is a belief that this will probably spur even more people to not trust the vaccines that are coming out and being approved by the Food and Drug Administration. Pulling the Moderna vaccine represents a setback for the state's goal of vaccinating 1 million additional Californians by this Friday. Around 500,000 doses had already been administered when the governor announced his goal, his 1 million additional Californian inoculation goal last week. To date, the state has administered approximately 1.8 million doses as of this weekend. Another potential hitch emerged Sunday when the State Department of Public Health announced that a new coronavirus strain, it is distinct from the coronavirus strain that was recognized in the United Kingdom about two weeks ago. This new variant has emerged in at least 12 California counties, and the new strain is linked to several large outbreaks, including one at a Kaiser emergency room in San Jose that has infected more than 90 people and left one person dead. Experts say that the new strain could potentially be more infectious and its mutations could possibly reduce the effectiveness of the available COVID-19 vaccines that are currently being administered in the United States. President-elect Biden has announced a rescue package to respond to the coronavirus pandemic that will direct roughly $400 billion into public health initiatives meant to ramp up vaccinations and help reduce the spread of the virus. The $1.9 trillion plan will be the first major legislative push the president-elect undertakes after he is sworn into office tomorrow. The scale of what he is proposing is substantial when compared to earlier relief packages. The last known as the CARES Act was approved in March, total, that was approved in March, totaled about $2 trillion, and a more recent deal signed into law at the end of December was around $900 billion. The Biden plan includes $20 billion for a national vaccine program that will work with state, local, and tribal governments to stand up community vaccination centers and deploy mobile vaccine services to remote regions of the country, of the, throughout the country. Expanded testing capacity is key to the administration's goal to safely reopen schools for in-person learning. The plan will allocate $50 billion to expand testing lab capacity, purchase rapid tests, and help schools and local governments implement regular testing protocols. Biden has set a goal of reopening the majority of the nation's kindergarten through eighth-grade schools within the first 100 days of his administration. Expanded testing will also help with vulnerable testing, such as in the prison populations and at long-term care facilities. The program is designed to ensure that any American can get a test for free when they need one. The proposal would also provide $130 billion to assist schools in reopening or facilitating remote learning. Schools could use the money for numerous different types of improvements such as reducing class size or modifying classrooms to accommodate social distancing protocols, improving ventilation systems, or purchasing personal protective equipment. The funding could also be used to prevent cuts to state pre-K programs. Additionally, the plan provides $1,400 in one-time payments to those Americans who are earning below a certain amount of annual income, while also extending unemployment insurance programs adopted in recent, in recent responses to the pandemic and boosting those weekly payments to $400. The Biden plan also includes funding to hire 100,000 public health workers who would initially work on vaccine outreach or contract tracing in local communities, and those workers would later transition into, into other community health roles throughout the nation. Uh, the plan also calls for discouraging employees from coming to work when they are sick and to help prevent the spread of the virus. This talks about the issue we, uh, earlier discussed this evening related to city's resolution. Under this particular pro, uh, proposal, the Biden administration would, uh, fund the expansion of paid, paid sick leave uh, to cities and counties, uh, and businesses throughout the country. The administration would, uh, ask Congress to restate provisions of the, uh, FRRCA program uh, that was previously in place. The administration would also seek to eliminate exemptions for employers with more than five-hundred employees or, or less than fifty employees. Uh, those were two groups that were excluded under the FFRCA. Therefore, uh, by, uh, adding those into a new plan being proposed would add a hundred-and-six-million more American workers, uh, providing them with access to paid sick leave. State and local governments would also be reimbursed for the cost of the expanded leave that is outlined in, uh, President-elect Biden's proposal. The plan would also provide funding to expand community health centers in underserved areas and provide state funding to deploy strike teams to long-term care facilities with COVID-19 response, and it calls for a thirty-billion dollars in rental and utility assistance for household uh, money that is greatly needed to assist in those areas. President-elect Biden is urging Congress to provide state, local, and territorial governments with three-hundred-and-fifty-billion dollars in emergency aid, along with billions of dollars in assistance for the schools and for transit-related programs. There's also twenty-billion dollars in the plan for public transit agencies that have seen ridership and fare revenue plummeted due to the virus outbreak. And there's a raft of other proposals as well, ranging from bolstered food assistance for struggling families to support for childcare programs and billions in loans and grants offered to small businesses. Uh, the US Congress of Mayors is on record to endorse the plan. And again, uh, the proposal is the first legislative action that, uh, the president-elect plans on putting before Congress. That concludes my comments related to COVID-19 update.
Thank you. Is there a question from Councilmember Johnson?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a, a question for, for, uh, Mr. Starr. Um, and I, I, I may have missed it at the beginning of your presentation, but, um, there was some discussion uh, a couple of months ago about the possibility of the city of Montclair being a vaccine site either at, uh, the transit center or at the mall. Um, do we know if that is, uh, going to occur?
We are not presently a designated vaccination center. There is a effort to try and migrate to supercenters uh, for that purpose. There have been none that have been identified in San Bernardino County at this point in time. Los Angeles County, uh, has several vaccination centers. Uh, Dodger Stadium will serve as one. Orange County has designated Disneyland as a super vaccination center, uh, but for, uh, San Bernardino County, there has been no designated super vaccination center that I have heard of, uh, at this point in time. There are a number of smaller regional vaccination centers, but the, uh, the testing center at the transit center has not been designated as such. However, we are trying to work with the county in designating Montclair Place as a regional vaccination center.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Mr. Starr.
Well, thank you very much. We'll go down to the mayor's communication next, and we will start with the, uh, council committee assignments. So each member of the council, uh, should have a copy of the assignments. Uh, here's a, uh, copy of that if you're new to the council. And so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna kinda go through each assignment. I know most of them are filled, but due to, uh, uh, a former Mayor Poltemaru Raft, uh, her positions, uh, are open. So I'll just, uh, go through these and see who's interested or serving. So I'll start with the code enforcement and public safety committee. Uh, there is an opening there. Is anybody interested in serving on that committee?
Mr. Mayor, I express an interest in the committee.
Okay, Mr. Lopez, Councilman Lopez, and of course, Councilmember Johnson's already on the committee. Uh, you wish to continue on the committee, uh, Councilmember Johnson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so no object, uh, objection, we'll, uh, place Mr. Lopez, Councilman Lopez, and continue on with Councilmember Johnson. The next one is, uh, Community Actist Commission. Any reason to change? Anybody that will keep it as is if I don't hear anything? Uh, the next two is Education and Human Services, uh, which both, uh, Councilmember Martinez and Mayor Potemaru serve on. So what I'd like to do on this committee of the OKs, I like to just, I think Human Services also covers education with their, uh, relationship with the school districts. I'd like to eliminate education, and we go with the Human Service Commission. Any objections to that? If I don't hear anything.
That's fine with me, Mr. Mayor.
We'll eliminate education as far as members, that there be no change. The next one is the Legislative Intergovernmental, uh, no change, I believe. I don't hear any changes there. The next one is personnel. There is an opening on personnel. Uh, uh, anybody interested in serving on personnel?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to serve on personnel.
Okay, Council, uh, Councilmember Johnson would like to serve on that. And then Councilmember Ru is still a member there. You wish to continue on, Mr. Ru, I believe?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor.
Again, you, I'm emoting you. So if that's the case, then, uh, Councilmember Johnson will join that committee. The next one is the Planning Commission Interview Panel. Obviously, there's an opening there.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Yeah, I know Mr. Lopez would like to serve on that committee. I know our other panel already consists of two other councilmembers. So if it's okay, we'll put Mr. Lopez on the Planning Commission Interview Panel.
I would also like to, I think they go hand in hand. Why, uh, Phil, because they correspond with each other, the Planning Commission position as well.
Okay, yeah, when we get down there, uh, we'll, we'll add you that, at that point there. Uh, next one is Public Works. There's an open on Public Works. Any interest on Public Works?
I'll, 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 I'll serve on that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and then, uh, Councilmember Johnson's there currently, so I assume she wants to continue on.
That's correct.
So, uh, uh, the Councilmember Lopez and, uh, on the, added to the Public Works Committee, uh, Real Estate Committee, uh, I assume there's no changes there. I don't hear any changes on the Real Estate Committee. Then we have the Tri-City Goal Line Committee, and I don't hear any changes there as well. The next one is the Chamber of Commerce, uh, which, uh, I don't, is there any changes on that? I don't hear any changes. Next one is the Community Actist Commission. I, the same thing there, uh, appropriate to go with the interview panel. Now, we have the opening on the Planning Commission, and, uh, I believe it would be appropriate to administer, uh, Councilman Lopez to that. The next one is the Interagency Committees. Uh, there's the Goal Line Phase Two Committee. Uh, Mr. Mayor Potemaru is the, uh, the permanent member and, and, uh, Councilmember Johnson is the alternate. Any changes there? Next one is Omni-Trans. Uh, I don't hear any changes on the Omni-Trans. Next one is SBCTA. I don't hear any changes on SBCTA. The next one is the IUA Regional Sewage Program.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to step down from IUA and offer that to another council member.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is I'd like to serve as a member of that, of that body. And then if, uh, uh, I'll serve as the permanent member, and then is there someone I could serve as the alternate member to the IUA?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be interested in doing that unless there's somebody else. I have a lot of assignments as it is.
Anybody else interested? Going once?
I, I, I would be interested in the, in the IUA slot.
Are you okay?
That's fine, Dan. Go ahead.
Okay, then, uh, I will serve as the permanent member, and then, uh, Councilmember Lopez will serve as the alternate member to IUA. External commit organizations. Well, the, the first one is the City Selection Committee, which the mayor is automatically a member of that. The next one is Elite California Cities, which is, is, uh, uh, obviously both occupied. I don't, I don't hear any changes. No changes?
Yes.
Next one is Elite California City State. Any changes? Any, I don't hear any changes. Next one is National League of Cities. Same thing. No changes? No? Okay. The next one is the SoCal General Assembly. Uh, any, I don't hear any changes. Any changes? No? Okay. The next one is the West Valley Mosquito Vet Control Board, which, uh, former member, uh, former Councilman Raft will continue on until her term expires. And then now to the external committees, I have a Chamber of Commerce Legislative Committee. Any changes? If not, and then the last, uh, next two, SBCTA Metro Valley, uh, Metro, uh, is automatic, uh, the SBCTA members automatically serve on Metro Valley steady session. SBC mayors and city managers, uh, I'd be myself. And then there's an opening on the SBC Solid Waste Advisory Task Force. I'm not sure, is that an actual? Uh, Jan, is, uh, Janice there, but, um, anybody interested in serving on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I would be, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry? I heard two, uh, two voices.
There's two of us.
Who would like to serve on it?
Who else was interested? I couldn't hear.
That's Councilmember Johnson was interested in.
Oh, go ahead. That's fine. Okay. And if, uh, Councilmember Johnson wanted to serve on the task force, then, uh, she'll be assigned to the task, uh, to the advisory task force for, uh, SWAT, and she'd be the member there. So I think, uh, that will complete the committee. One of the things I do want to add, I know sometimes we have committee meetings, and one of the members is absent, can add a ten. I will likely add some language that, uh, Mayor, myself, I can fill in for that person, or the mayor can designate another city council member to fill in for that absent member. Um, that relates to, uh, either city council committees or city council liaisons. So if you're okay with that add-on, uh, what I need is a motion to approve the, uh, the council committee assignments as is. As stated, excuse me.
I'll make a motion for that, Mr. Mayor.
I'll second.
Okay. If that's the case, we'll have a, a roll call motion, please.
Councilmember Lopez.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Potemaru.
Aye.
Mayor Dutre.
All right, so that is adopted five zero. Okay, um, I'll further go on. Uh, as we know, January sixth, uh, will be known as a very sad day in American history, uh, which, as we all know, we saw a violent, uh, mob attack, uh, our Capitol and our democratic foundation. As a Montclair mayor, I condemn the Ball and Act on this date. I also condemn, condemn the misinformation, the election was stolen, and recognize, uh, that the election of Joseph Biden as our next president of the United States. Tomorrow, as y'all know, is supposed to be an American celebration of the peaceful, uh, transfer of power. Instead, tomorrow will be remembered as a day where twenty-five-thousand troops, uh, are protecting Washington DC and also a day that the current president will be absent to welcome his successor. How did we get here? I think over, over, over twenty years, for over twenty years, our nation has been propagandized, from deep-left and right-wing individual and groups to spread misinformation for their own political power. And I think the last four years, we saw a toxic leader escalate this misinformation that further divided Americans and not ignited hate and violent groups. As you know, last spring, we witnessed a civil rights protest after the murder of George Floyd and the violent mob attacks that took place. I spoke, and I condemn these, these violent actions, and also spoke the importance of respecting our, our residents, our residents in the city in terms of their race, religion, sex, and condemn any form of discrimination here in the city of Montclair. Um, unfortunately, in this nation, there is a political discrimination, especially from the far-left and right. That's currently occurring. This is, this, this discrimination is causing people to disrespect each other's political beliefs. This is so, this is, this is associating with each other, uh, in terms of the opposing sides, name-calling, disinformation, gridlock policy, and now violence. Our nation is mord and invited compared to four years ago. Tomorrow, as Americans, we have a decision with a new president. We want to be a stable America that practices, practices its democracy with respect and peace, or will, or do we want to be an America in chaos? I believe sooner or later, we will get past this crisis. And as we all know, America has many crises in the past, and we've gotten through it. We, as a society and as Americans, strong and believe in our, in our, our Democrat principles, in the ideology of this, of this country. Remember, great people make great nations, and that's for sure true in, in, in this, in this country. So we as Americans are still great people that believe in America. So I'll lean by this saying this, may God bless the American people and our new president, and may God bless the USA. With that, uh, I know that there was a email from City of Big Bear Lake uh, regarding this item. It was very, very professionally done. And I'm gonna ask that this resolution, uh, we pretty much copy word-by-word resolution, put it on the next city council agenda for our adoption. I want to move on. Uh, we lost a dear, a very dear friend here in the city of Montclair last week. And I mentioned earlier today, uh, over four-hundred-thousand residents, uh, perished as a result of, of COVID-19. And, uh, this one person, uh, perished as well, along with his stepson, who died a week earlier. And, uh, uh, this person I'm speaking of is our former planning commissioner, Don Budvarca. We all know Don very well. Uh, I've known Don for over thirty years. He's in the city of Montclair. Um, he was, uh, part of the history of this city, and, uh, he gave me a lot of history questions or a lot of history, a lot of knowledge of the incorporation of this city, and he was also a, uh, a, uh, a, uh, one of the, well, uh, helped find our Lady Lord's Church in Montclair. Um, and then, of course, he served on the Planning Commission for over, um, I believe twenty years in the city of Montclair. I want to pray for her, uh, his wife, Diana, who, who's also, um, in the hospital and, um, and dealing with the COVID-19. And tonight, we're going to adjourn the memory of, uh, Don Budvarca. So with that, I'm going to move on, and I'll start with Mayor Potemaru.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yesterday, we observed the birthday of Doctor Martin Luther King. Generally, in this city for the last, oh, eight or nine years, the students at Montclair High School have used that day as a day to walk and raise money for homeless high school students. I participated in all but about two of those walks over the years. And although they could not walk yesterday due to the whole coronavirus pandemic, one of the things that was asked is to see if, instead of participating, reach out in your neighborhood, reach out among your friends, see what you can do to continue that service. And certainly, I did that. There were several people I know who are quite up there in years. They needed some help. And so I decided yesterday was the day, although I helped them quite a bit on and off throughout the last several months, to just make a little extra effort with them. So that was my way of observing that. You mentioned, Mr. Mayor, the passing of Don Budvarca. He's somebody certainly I knew, as you did, for many, many years, served on the Planning Commission with him, and I know he will be missed. In the, from the last time we met, there've been several other people, either Montclair residents or involved with Montclair who have passed. The, uh, longtime resident, over sixty years of Montclair and a business owner, Dick Og, died on December ninth. He was well-known in the community. I believe it was back in May that we celebrated his ninety-second birthday. He was a fixture in the community in many different activities, and he will be missed. Somebody, although not a Montclair resident, left a permanent mark on this city, and that was Jerry Laird, Laird Construction. He has, uh, his center is Laird Industrial Park, which is on Arrow, the south side, just west of Mona Vista, east of Ramona. He did a lot of work in this city, and if you look at some of the buildings in the sidewalk, you'll see Laird Construction or Laird Contractors. That was his mark, certainly a longtime person involved in this city. I note the passing of someone else, although not a Montclair resident, certainly involved in the, in the city in a different way. The passing of Steve Flores, the CPA. He was the president at one time of the Chaffee College Foundation and helped with their telephone, raising money on air. And on almost every occasion, when he was on air, he mentioned what was then online to college, the need for it, and tried to get as many people to be involved as he could. So he will be missed, and I extend my condolences. I know we all do to Councilmember Deborah Parada in Ontario. Her father, Jim Dorst, passed away, and I know we extend condolences to their family. Mr. Mayor, you mentioned the inaugural tomorrow? You're absolutely right. I know I had an invitation to the inaugural. Made my plans, and obviously, with things changing, I canceled them. Would have been my seventh inaugural. Right now, I've attended six, three on the D side, three on the R side. I'm reminded of where- I'm reminded of words spoken sixty years ago tomorrow by President John Kennedy. In his inaugural address, he said, "It is not a victory." Today, we observe not a victory of party, but a celebration of freedom. And that's what an inaugural is. During that very hard-fought campaign, at that time, the closest in American history, the entertainment community were lined up on one side or the other, some for Kennedy, some for Nixon. John Wayne was a Nixon supporter. After the election, they said, they asked John Wayne in an interview how he felt, considering he supported Nixon. He said, "John Kennedy is now my president too." And of course, we've seen the pictures of John Wayne in the White House with President Kennedy. We need to keep that spirit alive. It is not about D or R, it's about our country. And I, too, was offended with what I saw on June sixth. I'm going to be a little more open. I don't believe they were insurrectionists, they were terrorists. We had people who openly wanted the vice president dead and were aiming for him, people openly wanting the death of the Speaker and others. They had a gallows created on the west side of the Capitol. That's not an insurrection, that's terrorism. And I'm upset that members of the US House of Representatives, members of the US Senate couldn't, in many cases, bring themselves to do anything or say anything. One of them said, "Oh, this is an assault on policemen." Well, yes, it is, but it was an assault on democracy first. He never said that. Another one said, "Well, some of these people just got carried away." You get carried away when you buy too many things for your grandchild's first birthday and max out the American Express. You don't, it's not being carried away when you walk up to the steps of the Capitol, break windows, destroy statues, and threaten people's lives. On that day, there were some heroes. One of them, Eugene Goodman, Capitol Police Officer, who led some of these terrorists away from the Senate chamber doors. Many of them followed him because they were angry that he was an African-American. He's a hero. One of the heroes died that day. Capitol policeman Brian Sicknick, beaten over the head with fire extinguisher. There's no excuse for this. There's none. Nobody can make an excuse for it. Many of those who are condemning it now saw nothing wrong with questioning everything they saw about the election. I'm angry, but I know our democracy will prevail. I have been reading quite a bit about this. I have decided to read, not the media, but what social psychologists are saying from reputable institutions. My question was, where did people get such hate? That they would beat somebody over the head with a fire extinguisher till they were dead? Or go after somebody simply because of their race? We've seen this before. But we're seeing it now in real time. Social psychologists said it begins with the demonization of human beings. We demonize them for race, creed, color, ethnicity, and many other things. They said even good people, everyday residents, citizens, begin the demonization process. They look at their neighbors differently. "Oh, look at those people over there, they don't keep their house really well, they're trashy." Well, instead of complaining about it, please go over and help them, see what you can do. We see them, people complain about, "Oh, look at that family with all those children." Well, see if you can do something to help that family. Once we begin demonizing our neighbors and calling them trash, calling them garbage, questioning everything they do, it's the next step, the next step, and the next step. It escalates. So, it begins with us. Dr. King wanted us to look at each other as God's children, and that's what we need to do. I was upset, but I know that good people will prevail. We've seen the stories of many of our members of Congress, some who represent this area, such as Norma Torres, and their harrowing experiences that day. I don't care what side you're on, democracy must prevail. These members took an oath to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States. The same oath we take as council members. And although, as a council, we will have our disagreements, there's not a doubt in my mind that every one of the individuals who sit on this dais would uphold and defend the Constitution and would never, ever do anything that would dishonor this country. I know that for who I am, I know my colleagues. Moving on from that, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned the coronavirus claiming 400,000 lives. We're almost at the point of as many people dying in the last few months from this as died in all of World War II, as far as US military casualties. During World War II, there were 416,800 military casualties in our four years of involvement in the war. Today, there are 400,000 dead from coronavirus. Some of them include friends of mine. You've mentioned one of them, Don Vodvarca. We need to do what we can do. If we want to honor them, let's make sure we have face coverings, washing our hands, keeping social distancing. Stop questioning whether you think it's right or wrong and just do it. You're asked to wear a seatbelt in your car, you do it. You're asked to put your child in the safety seat, you do it. Let's just do this, let's see what we can do to beat this. The other way is to, when you can, get a vaccine. San Bernardino County has a number you can call if you're sixty-five and older. You can sign up to get a vaccine. That number is 909-387-3911. And you can set an appointment that way. I know I've been a little long tonight, but thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think, when we think back on it, I look at our democracy that we have right here in this city. Democracy isn't perfect, but as Winston Churchill said, "It's better than any other known form of government." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Potemru, I want to let you continue the meeting, not to use the manager real fast, and allow Councilmember Johnson for her comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, just a couple of things. During this last election cycle, there was quite a bit of disagreement. And I believe that people have the right to speak their opinion. That's the First Amendment right, they have the right to speak their opinion, and we all have the right to disagree. But as we do that, as we defend everyone's right to free speech, let us do so peacefully. Let us disagree peacefully. And as we move through tomorrow, through the inauguration, I am praying for peace for this country, for the state, and for our city, that we all move forward peacefully. We need to agree that our democracy is the best, and we should and just remain calm. Also, I would like to talk about my dear friend, Don Vodvarca, that I met almost thirty years ago, as we sat on the Board of Directors at Neighborhood Partnership of Montclair to address the housing needs of the residents of Montclair. He was one of the most passionate people that I have ever met when it comes to the residents of this, of Montclair, of the city. He did everything he could, including painting houses of seniors and installing locks and all kind of great things he's done for this city. He's probably done more than I know about, because when I met him, he was already an active volunteer for the city. He, not only did he do Neighborhood Partnership, you've heard, he was a planning commissioner for many years. He was a volunteer police officer for many years. He just, I think, as a matter of fact, many of the housing tracts that are here in this city, he helped build because of the beginning of his career. When he left the military, he worked in construction. And some of you may have heard that his brand-new bride, he just kind of drove her around town and said, "Pick where you want to live, because I'm going to help build that house." And he did, and that's the house that he lived in until he died. So, he was a critically valuable person to our community. He will be dearly missed by all of us who knew him. And I wish for health and peace for his widow, Diana. That's all I have tonight, thank you.
Oh, I'm back. Okay, let's go with Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. I'd also like to send my heartfelt condolences to Don Vodvarca's family. I've met him a few times, and he was very, very welcoming to me when I joined the city council. So, I appreciate that very much. There has been a lot going on this month, this past year. And so, I'll focus on something positive. I really would like to commend the employees and staff who run the City of Montclair's social media pages, because they are incredibly quick with the posts and accurate and informative. I believe that they keep everyone posted on what's going on nationally in our community with regard to, you know, street-sweeping parking enforcement, which I mentioned, because I believe today's the day that we're resuming enforcement. And also, that the award earlier for the volunteer helped me to remember that this city has so many moving parts. And somehow, everything gets done. We have wonderful human services program that helps to feed our residents. We have department heads that keep everything moving. When, you know, from where I'm sitting, everything stops. So, I would just really like to say I very much appreciate how well-oiled and well-run our city is. And it's not me that does that. You know, it's definitely our department heads, our employees, and our staff, and our volunteers. And we're making things happen despite the fact that it has been a challenging year already.
I would now go on to Councilmember Lopez.
Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, great. To all those that are listening online or on their computers, thank you for sticking it through with us for the past hour, hour and a half. A couple points, let me address Don Vodvarca's passing. For those of you that know me, know that I started very young in Montclair politics on the other side of the dial, a dais rather, where I was a resident that took active in civic politics. And I would get up to the podium and speak on a few items of concern. And many times in my passion, I was a little bit of a rebel rouser at times. And Don Vodvarca was one, not to mince words and express his opinion, and he was rather blunt. And in, when I was done speaking at the podium one time, and obviously, he disagreed with the position and critique I had, he whispers to me that I was a disrespectful young blankety-blank. And for many years, Don and I did not see eye to eye, and we were not friends. However, that changed about four years ago. And Don and I warmed up to each other and started sharing just common interest in the city. And before you know it, I was getting calls from him back when I was serving on the vector control board for mosquito wipes and fly swatters and repellents. And I'd make deliveries to his home. And of course, after some very close and contentious city council elections, he gave me one of the, probably one of the most ultimate honors, where I knew him and I had come full circle. And that is when he told me he had voted for me. And his, one of his words to me were, "I don't care what others say about you, you're a pretty cool kid." So, I had forgotten that about Don, and I'm glad him and I ended our relationship on a good note and good foot. My condolences to his family, and my prayers to Diana. I pray that she pulls through and recovers from this virus as she's in the hospital. Couple comments regarding the county, San Bernardino County's lawsuit to the state and Kurt Hagman's role as board chair. The way I understand it is that the county has sued the state because the state, i.e. being mainly the governor, has changed the metrics and the rules for counties on opening up their counties and getting out of restrictive tiers. And at least three times, when San Bernardino County's numbers dropped, hospitalizations dropped, and increased PPE-type procedures were put in for businesses and other entities throughout the county, the state arbitrarily changed the rules on them. And this county had utilized millions of dollars to facilitate all these changes, get the county, the ball rolling in the positive direction, only to have the rug pulled from them multiple times. And not just San Bernardino County, multiple counties. So, with that, the county decided that it would challenge the authority of the state and the state's ability to undermine the county health department's authority to basically get their respective jurisdictions up to speed and meeting standards. And therein is the tussle. I don't fault or blame Kurt Hagman or the board at all. I know Kurt is going to take the arrows because he just happens to be board chair. But I wouldn't criticize him because I'm not in that position. And I know the county has made great effort to make sure that we could reopen, that our numbers are down, and doing everything that they could under the sun to try to protect its residents. And I would actually applaud San Bernardino County for doing all that it has. I know others may disagree, but we could disagree agreeably. I had brought up to the city manager, and I'm hoping we could, if I could get an answer perhaps by the next meeting or before then, Mr. City Manager, if you could, please follow up with respect to the landscaping in front of Fire Station Two. I know we briefly, before the meeting, I brought up the issue of protective gates around stations to help possibly address transient and homeless individuals on property. I know that logistically, the gates may not happen, I get it, as far as the gates for, to stop traffic flow. But hopefully, we can address something with respect to that. And then on December eighteenth, right after we had our last meeting on the seventh. For those of you that know, I have relatives, we have three properties in a row that we own in San Bernardino Street. We had relatives that were hit with COVID-19. And one was pretty severe, that they needed to be hospitalized. So, we called 911. And ambulance came and our firemen came. And of course, those family from a distance were observing everything that was going on as they were triaging him, putting him in a stretcher, getting him oxygen, and preparing him for his hospital trip. And I discovered that our firefighters or medics, the iPads or the, well, yeah, the iPads that they use to input patient data was malfunctioning on them. And it weren't, they weren't working properly. I inquired, and they had stated there was some instances where they just weren't working quite for some time. And in some cases, they were having to write down information of the patient on paper because the computer wasn't capturing the data that then gets transported to the hospital. And this was a relative of mine. And this is why it's a little bit of a personal issue with me, because I saw it happen to a relative. And I thought, how many more other residents' relatives are going through the same thing? So, I'd like for the city council, if we could, to put on the agenda or if there can be something that can be done internally to address the use of perhaps getting, for those that are dilapidated or old or just out of use, if we could utilize those pads, get them updated pads, up-to-speed pads that'll cage the information properly, so that way it gets transported properly, and it doesn't freeze on them, blackout on them, et cetera. If that could be looked into, I'd appreciate it.
I was just, not I am there to let the city manager look into it, and he can respond back to us in written communication.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I can respond right now, the new iPads, I believe, are on order. At least I had this conversation with the IT director maybe a couple of weeks ago, and he showed me the pictures of the damaged iPads and that he was placing orders for replacement ones. But I will confirm that.
Thank you. And on a personal note, I mentioned or alluded to this in my comments on my swearing-in a little over a month ago. And I want to give people some assurance out there in the city. Folks, if there's any hesitation or reservations about me, please get to know me, is what I would, the best advice that I would extend to any resident that may have any reservation. Please, don't buy hook, line, and sinker what others say about me or what you may have read from what people think they know about me. I've always said it's better to operate with an open hand than a clenched fist, and that's going to be my motto in dealing with those that may even have reservations of, of me and disagreements with me. I am open to having a conversation, a genuine conversation, an open dialogue, and a sincere talk with anyone that wants to. I do not want to be in gotcha situations, but I'm here to be of service to all residents and listen to all residents. I will say this, that I will not relitigate, if you will, the issues that were brought up in the 2020 campaign. I think those were put to bed with respect to the results of the election. But I, for those folks that genuinely know me, I, I am not the, the rebel or the bad guy that people want to perceive me or make me out to believe and be their scapegoat or their whipping boy for their own agenda. But I, I'm here to genuinely serve and represent all. And I've come a long way. Trust me. I've really come a long way than, than the Ben Lopez that was 10, 15, 20 years ago. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll conclude my comments.
Okay, at this time, the city council, we'll go into closed session, which is, remind everybody again, we'll adjourn this meeting in memory of planning commissioner, Don Vodvarca. And I think we need about, what, one minute to go, go on closed session? So one minute good for everybody, let us, the city clerk.
Mr. Mayor, can we have closer to three minutes?
Okay, well, three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, three minutes, and then we'll be back in three minutes. Okay, so I will do, we're in open session, the city council is, closed session announcements. Staff received, council received information from and there was, and there's no other information at this time. And at this time, the city council is adjourned. Thank you.